Hello, it's that time again. I'm here to discuss the Exeter Board of Supervisors meeting held on September 9th, 2019. The following are my opinions, including some slides that I've included where I've inserted my opinions on those topics as well. I just want you to know that these videos are filmed with an iPhone X. And if you're not interested in my opinions, all you need to do is when you start watching this, go down to below the video on YouTube, click on "See More," and you will see the index that I have there, and you can go directly to the area of the meeting that you wish to look at, you wish to view. You'll see the agenda, you will see a time that's in a blue color. Click on that time, and it will take you directly to the portion of the meeting that you wish to listen to. And I just want to say that during, just a few comments about the meeting. During the video, you'll hear at some point where the operator of my phone asks them to speak louder, please. This happens a number of times in this particular meeting, it's happened in past meetings. But what's a little different in this meeting, you'll finally hear some private citizens also speak up and make it clear that they're not able to hear the discussions that are going on. So hopefully, the Board of Supervisors will notice what we're talking about here and make some accommodations so that everyone can hear. And that's one thing you want to notice. Another thing I wanted to mention is I also took notice of the fact that when they do the reports at the end of the meetings, the manager's report is missing. There's, actually, it says "No Manager's Report." So here's a gentleman, Mr. Granger, who holds many, many different titles. He's the Treasurer, he's the Secretary, he's the Chief Administrative Officer, he's the Right-to-Know Officers, he's the Grievance Officer, and of course, he's the Township Manager. And yet, for the past four meetings that I've checked, there has been no management report. It's hard to believe that in our township, with all the things that are going on, that the Township Manager has nothing to report to the Board and to the citizens that attend this meeting on a regular basis. Finally, I want to talk, before we go into the slides, I want to talk about the situation relating to the grievance officer actions or responsibilities of Mr. Granger. The police report directly to Mr. Granger, and he's been assigned as a grievance officer. And recently, there's been discussion, at the last meeting, where I felt it was a conflict of interest. And you'll hear in this meeting, the Board discussing the fact, or trying to smooth over this issue, claiming that, well, Mr. Granger comes to the Board, it's not his decision. However, the fact is that he's the one who will be out in the field investigating the grievance, and he will, in his words and in his opinion, bring this information to the Board. Now, Mr. Granger, in my estimation, has somewhat of a problem with telling the truth sometimes. We've seen this in financial information he's presented, and we've seen in previous jobs where he's had problems. I guess the word would be ethically challenged. So in my opinion, I still remain convinced that this is unfair to anyone in the Police Department who has a grievance. And I'm hoping the Chief will step forward, he's been here long enough now, and step up for his men and point out that this is a conflict of interest and Mr. Granger needs to be removed from this process. Now, I don't know what the grievance is. It could be, you know, anything. And I'm not concerned about the grievance itself, I'm concerned about the process. And it has to be fair. It always has to be fair, especially with our policemen. They put their lives on the line every day for us. They deserve much better than this. So I hope you'll go into the meetings in the future, express your opinions about this. In fact, I think some private citizens probably have done this already because they rarely backtrack on an issue and make comments about it like they have in this particular meeting related to the grievance, trying to explain it away. Don't believe it. Don't believe what they're telling you. There is still a conflict of interest as long as Mr. Granger is involved in this process. So let's hope that they'll come to their senses and change this situation. Now you're going to see five slides that I decided to make because I can put the information right there so you can see it, supporting my opinions related to certain activities that have, are mentioned in this meeting. So from, we'll go on from here. I hope you enjoy my opinions and enjoy the video. This slide is discussing what happened at the meeting that you'll see soon on September 9th, 2019, where Diana Reeser went to the, during the public comment section, discussed the fact that her comments were not accurately reflected in the minutes. And so I wanted to display this and give you my opinion on what's going on here. So on the left, you can see where David Costevel, a reporter for the Reading Eagle, an excerpt from his article, basically reporting what Mrs. Reeser said during her public comment period. And then below, to the right, you can see what Mr. Crusades and Mr. Granger decided to put in the minutes. And it clearly has no representation to what was actually said. And I'm very, very disturbed about this. You should be as well, because at least with public comments, it should be as clearly articulated in these minutes so that the public knows what other private citizens are communicating to the Board. And the fact that Mr. Crusades has his opinions interjected into this public comment period is a further indication of how much of a control freak he probably is. He cannot help himself by interjecting his comments into the public comment period. So what can we do about this? I'm not sure. All we could do right now is expose what's going on and hope that we'll see change. We have two non-elected supervisors who are running for election in November. They're sitting there, they see the same thing I do, they see the same thing that all of you are seeing, and yet, none of them step up and comment about the inaccuracy and the unfairness of what is going on. And the problem is, if you go into that room and you criticize the chairperson or the work that the Board of Supervisors are doing, you basically become a potential enemy and you can expect to be attacked at some point in time, particularly if you show up more than once. And this was the second time that I saw Mrs. Reeser attend a meeting. She's one of a new group of citizens that are starting to take an interest in what's going on in our community. And I hope more people will do that. It's very dramatic at these meetings. I'll talk about that in a later slide, but I hope we can get more people out there. I hope that you will go to the meeting and you will express your concerns about how the Board of Supervisors is communicating public comment to the rest of the public. So read what we've written here and hope to see you at the meeting. This slide is the official document allowing the tax levy on Exeter Township for the $5 per capita tax. You will hear this being discussed in a public comment section by me with the Township Supervisors during this meeting, the Supervisors' meeting of September 9th, 2019. And as this document will show, that the General Assembly has approved a $5 levy in Exeter Township for 18 years of age and over. Note that this tax requires reenacted annually. And supposedly, the most current legislation is on file in the Township Offices. And I've requested a copy of that reenacted document for 2019 and the previous five years. What I'd like to point out here is that the annual list of residents is provided to the Board by the Board of Assessments. It's a report called the Tax Duplicate List. And the Board of Assessments and Revision of Taxes of Burke County provide this to the Board of Supervisors. And also, the Board of Supervisors have the opportunity to review and add the names of residents to this list if they are missing. For example, Lisa Vanderlande and her significant other's names should have been added to this list, but never were added, even as she sat on the Board of Supervisors for about four Also note who collects these taxes. It's our tax collector, who was duly elected in Exeter Township. And it also talks about discounts and penalties that can be incurred. So the reason why I'm talking about this, because you will hear in the meeting, as you listen to the, and watch the video, that our solicitor suggests that the collection of this tax is outsourced. And she is terribly incorrect on this matter. And you will hear comments from Mr. Spees supporting her contention, but the fact of the matter is that it's not outsourced. The business privilege tax is outsourced, but not the per capita tax. Any of you who've paid this tax know that you send your per capita tax payment into Charlie Diamond's office, or you go in there personally and you write a check and pay Charlie for the per capita tax. So clearly, it's not outsourced. So our solicitor is blatantly incorrect on this. That's one thing. The other thing that should be noted is that Mrs. Vanderlande and her significant other have failed to pay this per capita tax for at least 10 years. Certainly, as long as she's resided in Exeter Township, she's never paid it. And I want you to listen carefully to Mr. Vincent B. and Cohn explain why this is okay. He claims that because she decided not to take payment in her position as a supervisor, this allows her the privilege of not paying this per capita tax. Now, this should be a problem for everyone. Mr. B. and Cohn is running for election this year in November. He's never been elected, he was appointed to the Board last year, very little experience as a supervisor. And listen to the logic that he presents in this discussion, and you decide if you really want someone like this on the Board of Supervisors for the next six years. It's totally separate issues, he doesn't comprehend the situation. When you assess the tax, it's your obligation to pay it. And it's clear that Lisa Vanderlande evaded paying this tax. Now, the argument could be made, well, it's not that much money. Well, think about it. $15, over 10 years for two people, 60% of that money goes to support the children in the school system, 40% goes to the Township taxpayers. And they refuse to even look into this issue that I've raised. Now, I was hoping, what I expected was a Board that would be sane, intelligent, and reasonable, and at least say, well, let's go talk to the tax collector and find out if what Mr. Hughes is saying is accurate. And if they do that, they'll find out that I am precise about this, and they should direct the tax collector to send a bill for 2019 to Mrs. Vanderlande and her significant other living at 5560 Warrior Town Pike. And they should also send a second bill collecting, they can only go back five years, so they could collect the previous five years with late fees, fines, and if interest is allowed, with interest. This money is legitimately taxed and should be collected on everyone who lives in the Township of Exeter Township. And there's no special exception for Lisa Vanderlande because she was a supervisor or she was chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Again, you can look at 340-4 Annual List of Residents. By the direction of the Board of Supervisors, names could have been added. Lisa Vanderlande sat on that board. She should have known, she had to have known, that other people were paying this per capita tax, and that she was required to pay it as well, but she never volunteered to add her name to this list. So if you're unhappy because you've got to pay a lot of taxes, and you see our supervisors not fulfilling their responsibilities, and in fact, you see our current supervisors refusing to pursue this, then you need to go into the meeting and you need to voice your opinion. Okay, here is one of the biggest issues of the meeting on September 9th, 2019. This has to do with an agreement negotiated by Vincent B. and Cohn, and we're trying to find out who else was involved. It seems that they, they don't seem to know who was even involved in negotiations, or they won't tell us, with Mr. Mascaro and his attorney, Fox. And you can see that, there was a full article in the Reading Eagle, this is just some excerpts from it, from the, David Costevel, who was the reporter on this. And you can see that the Supervisors negotiated an extra 10 cents per ton, amazing increase, right? So now we're going to receive $2.35 per ton of waste after almost 20 years of dumping garbage in our backyard. And the Township Supervisors thinks, they think this is a great deal, okay? Mr. Crusades says this shows that we are business savvy. Well, I'll let you decide how much savvy these guys have. They really have no experience in negotiating, they have no idea. When Mr. Crusades was asked in this meeting if he knew what the rates were for other municipalities, he had no clue. So I'm wondering who had the information and who had the experience to negotiate? So let's just break this down a little bit so we can understand exactly what we got, all right? So we're going to get 10 cents more per ton. And they're telling us that that's going to increase our revenue by $40,000 a year. So if we divide 10 cents into 40,000, it tells us that they're going to dump 400,000 tons of garbage in our backyard, okay? Everybody following you so far? And if that's the case, I looked at what, you know, some places are charging to dump a ton of garbage in the landfill, and I've estimated it's $65 a ton. And so this means that Mr. Mascaro has revenue of $26 million a year. And if you take the 400,000 tons of garbage times $2.35, we're going to get $940,000 for giving him the privilege of dumping that garbage again in our backyard. It doesn't seem to me as a fair deal. I could be wrong, all of this is just my opinion, but I would expect this to do a little bit better after over 18 years of having Mr. Mascaro dumping garbage from all over the East Coast into our backyard, creating various issues that we could discuss another time. But what I was hoping to see is something closer to $3.90 to $4 a ton. Based on the revenue expectations, this seems a fair, a more fair deal. So you think about this and you decide for yourself. Now also, the devil is in the details. And this, this particular case where it's been widely advertised that Mr. Mascaro is donating a million dollars to the Township to build towards a new firehouse, well, I'm not sure that that's exactly true, because if you get into the details of this agreement, there's actually two agreements that Exeter Township has to sign. And the first agreement is an amendment to the existing agreement to increase the 10%, the 10 cent per ton increase. And if we sign that agreement, then we'll get $500,000 of the 1 million over a five-year period. So it's not a donation, it's attached to a contingency on this amendment agreement. It's not a donation. It's characterized as one, but at least to me, in my opinion, it's not a donation because if we don't sign the amended agreement, we don't get the $500,000. And then there's a second agreement, which is characterized as a joint cooperation agreement. And I believe it's going to allow them to dump even more garbage in our backyard because it needs an approval from the DEP. And the other $500,000 of the 1 million would then be made available to us by Mr. Mascaro, but only again if the agreement is signed and the DEP approves it. Now, these two $500,000 payments are going to be made over five years. We're not getting a million dollars in a check. It's going to be paid over five years. So does that mean that we wait until we get all this money to build the fire station? Do we have to wait another five years? And also, let me suggest, as a financial analyst and an accountant for 40 years, remind everyone about a little item called the present value of money. So basically, the concept is if a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow because of the time value of money. So when you look at the payment of $200,000 a year over five years, and we calculate that on a 4% interest rate, Mr. Mascaro isn't giving us a million dollars. He's giving us a little bit more than $800,000 in today's money because it's being paid over five years. So you have to be careful when you analyze these negotiations and contracts. Now, we don't know all the other things that might be in this agreement because no one has been able to see the agreement. We're going to submit a Right-to-Know Request, and as you know, often these requests, we have to wait 35 days because Mr. Granger wants to treat everyone the same. I do want to commend Mr. Mascaro and Mr. Bill Fox for their negotiating skills, because in my opinion, they certainly negotiated a very, very good deal for their company. And that's not a criticism. This is the way business works. Hopefully, you have a win-win situation when you negotiate, but in my opinion, I think Mr. Mascaro and Mr. Fox would, I would say they won pretty big on this negotiation. And we'll see some of the additional facts when we finally get to see the agreement. In this slide, what I'm trying to communicate to you is a concern of mine, which I express in the public comments during this meeting on September 9th, 2019, where I talk about the need for a policy requiring the Board to approve fund transfers. You'll see here, these are excerpts from the Township of Exeter agreed upon procedures that was an audit requested for the Running Country Club because of all the issues concerning what they thought were missing funds, but were not actually missing funds, but just transferred improperly without their knowledge in some cases, or maybe they forgot. But it shows the need for a policy to recognize fund transfers from one fund to another, internal transfers. And you can see here, providing you with four different instances in this report where it states specifically, or alludes to the fact that the Township did not have a policy requiring Board approval of fund transfers. So that's all that I'm trying to show here. And if you listen to my comments, and then Mr. Crusades had to comment on my comments and interjected that these were just internal transfers, suggesting that it wasn't important, or my comments about it were not important. But we still do not have a policy. I don't see anything happening in the future where they will develop a policy, although one of the Supervisors said that they're working on it. We'll see if it actually happens. It should also be noted that Mr. Granger in 2018 transferred $7 million from the sewer fund into the general fund. And at this meeting on September 9th, 2019, you'll hear Carl Schemburg ask Mr. Crusades if he knows where that $7 million came from. And in a rare moment, he admitted that he did not know. And in a rare moment, he admitted that he did not know. Well, Carl knows, and I know where it came from, and other people know, that it was the proceeds of a bond issue many years ago. And this money has been sitting there, $7 million, for many years. And it was intended to be used to keep the plant in good running condition and up to date. But they didn't do that, of course. And I believe that the transfer of this money out of the sewer fund is an illegal transfer. It's part of the sewer fund capital moved improperly. It should be used when the sewer fund is finally dissolved, if it's sold to Pennsylvania American Water, and we dissolve the sewer fund. Those funds should be used to pay off the bond that we had issued. So, it should be used to pay off the bondholders. And then, if there's anything left over from that, the residual, I think, should be returned to the ratepayers since the sewer fund will no longer exist. So, maybe it's their inexperience. Maybe they're not taking the time to understand what they're doing. But certainly, this transfer was made. It was communicated somewhere, but it was never approved by the board. So, did Mr. Granger do this on his own? Or was, did someone in the administration direct him to do it? Did a supervisor tell him to do it? And that information wasn't recorded for the public knowledge? We don't, these are questions that need to be answered. And I'm hoping that you'll help me by going into the meetings and asking these questions and expecting an answer. But it's fairly clear to me that we need a policy that recognizes the transfer of funds from one fund to another fund so that there's complete transparency and there's no mistaking what happened to the funds and what they are. And with that, we're going to go into our last slide. It's basically just my reflections on what could possibly be happening in our meetings that make them so difficult to attend sometimes. And you'll hear that next, and then we'll go right into the meeting. Thanks for your attention. I've tried to figure out what's wrong with our meetings. They don't seem to be very relaxing or enjoyable. There seems to be an air of antagonism between the Board of Supervisors and the public. The treatment that we get from the supervisors is quite unique. It's almost like it's we and them instead of our supervisors working for us and listening to what we have to say and concerned about what we are thinking in terms of what's good for the community, what we would like. And our feedback doesn't seem to be welcomed at almost every turn. So, what could cause this? What is causing the friction in these meetings? And recently, there was an article in the Redding Eagle on their website, and someone mentioned that one of the board members seemed to possess the classic symptoms of narcissism. So, I went and I looked up this thing, NPD, or Narcissistic Personality Disorder. And so, I thought I'd post this slide. And you can read the typical symptoms. Excessive need for admiration, disregard for others' feelings, and inability to handle any criticism and a sense of entitlement. And with that, I also posted just one classic narcissistic trait. And you can read this. It's basically talks about how someone will interrupt and talk over other people that are trying to discuss something. And see if you can attribute these behaviors to anyone in the room in the meeting. And I plan on looking into this narcissistic personality disorder more deeply and bring you some information concerning this. But I have, I get the sense that we may have finally stumbled onto what the real problem is in our township, and particularly in all of these meetings. Because it's like the old saying I've heard before. You can cut the air with a knife. That's how tense these meetings become at times.
Call the order, the September 9 Exeter Board of Supervisors Meeting. Please stand for the plate.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, for a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm taking the meeting this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. R. King?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Spees?
Here.
Mr. Cusadis?
Here.
Darren is not present.
May I ask what to make of it?
Well, just want to congratulate Darren. On Saturday, she had a little baby boy. So, he was 21 and a half. He was a big boy. As far as I know, everybody's, if you don't know me, I don't want to bother too much.
She's a girl.
Mother and son are healthy. That's the important thing. All right, we'll get right into public comments. Mr. Hughes. Make sure my sound.
You're doing now?
Yeah.
Okay.
You got it.
I have the question on the right-to-know, what's on the agenda for tonight? I was just wanting to take into consideration, can we help ourselves by not making more information available that we don't have to request the right-to-know by sharing more? I mean, this was one of the things you talked about.
I think that's what the new website, as mentioned earlier, the new website, it really should be downtrodden, not right-to-knows. Everything's on there now. There's data from 2008, so you're right. That's why, one of the reasons, the new website, it is easier to navigate, and you should be able to use that to prevent the right-to-knows.
But I'm from the old school. I don't have a computer.
You can go to the library.
I don't tell you what to do in your time. I'm saying, I'm at the meeting now. I'm at the meeting now, see? I think it's good because we all hear the same subject.
Yep.
We all get smarter.
Well, we're going to post it tonight, so you're going to be able to see it. So, that's another advantage tonight. And they're already posted on the internet. I know you don't have a computer, but you could have done it only weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Computers are cheap. You can go buy one.
No. I know, I'm not going to start now. Too early. When I come to the meetings, I think I should hear it here.
Yes, and you will.
Okay?
You tell them.
Next up, David Hughes. You're talking to me as an agenda item. Name and address.
David Hughes, 47th Street. First thing I'd like to mention is about soon to be...
A little louder, please.
First thing I'd like to talk about is a motion coming up soon to approve the minutes, two cents of minutes. I don't think they can be approved this day because if anyone has read them, some of the motions say unanimously voted on, but some of the motions do not have unanimously and do not have an indication what the vote was. So, if you've all done your duty and reviewed the minutes, you know that they're not written properly. And some of the public comments related to those minutes are not presented enough information to fully understand what the public comment was about. And in the public comments, some of them are inserted with Mr. Cusadis's comments, which don't belong in the public comments. So, with that said, I'll move on to the next issue that I want to talk about. And that is the, or if I could do it, reserve my comments for the golf report.
Do it now. So, they turn down. Okay. One minute 37.
I will do that. The golf report is a great thing. So, I thank you, Mr. Spees, for standing up for this. I think it should have some additional columns, like a check mark or an indication when you've redacted certain items for a request. Some of these things, like Mr. Granger's contract, the contract that we, the very generous contract we have with EEMA, our police chief's contract, they can be put on the website so they don't have to be requested every time. I've read a couple of these requests. I'm interested in them. Do I have to place my RTK in to get a copy or what? So, the other item is...
Forty seconds.
Fourty seconds.
Are you done? Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Forty seconds.
Next up. Bill, do you want to, you want to wait until the agreement? Carl, you want to wait till the end?
Oh, yeah. Unless you want to read it now, that's good.
No, wait for the end. Michelle, you're going to talk about item number five on new business.
Yes, I also have the general comments. Would you like me to quickly do the general?
Yes.
I also agree that...
Name and address, please.
Michelle Kercher, Stonehenge, five, writing. I also agree that they are agenda items and our minutes are not as they should be. Ordinance should be put on them whether they're variances, ordinances, or zoning, whatever. You cannot look back in the record and if you see an ordinance was approved, whereas, how do we have a right to view it? So, that needs to be put on. All we're asking for is transparency, that we know what's going on and that we have a chance to look at it in case we have any questions. We've been asking the same questions over and over. All we want is transparency. We want to see what's going on. Please, just let us see. It's our township too. So, also the August 12 minutes, the dispersments weren't put on? At least I can find.
Yeah, they were. They were.
They're on?
Yep.
Now, they're on? Okay.
I know you're troubled today with the website.
Yeah, it was not a fun experience with that website at all. So, that's another thing I think you really should look at and ask help with that. And that's all to bring out.
Thank you, Miss Kercher. Have a wonderful night. Next up. Hey, let's get right to it. Minutes, August 12, 2019, approval.
Yeah, I have a comment about them. One, my name is spelled wrong, so if you could correct that.
Excuse me.
Oh, can I?
You're on the agenda for general comments. You want to wait till then, please? We can't just end up meeting.
Well, it's about the minutes, though.
Do you want to talk about the minutes then? Can you just talk now about the minutes?
Okay. Well, I have something else to say.
You wrote a general comment.
I did, since I have general comments. I mean, can I still talk with general comments?
I would rather you both now.
Well, they're not about the agenda items.
That's okay. You can talk.
Okay.
Want to talk now or not?
Well, I wanted to say that I don't think you represented my comments correctly.
Okay, well, can you please get the podium so it's on right? So, you can talk about the agenda items. It's your agenda. Okay. Name and address, please.
Diana Reeser, 4134 Lyman.
Louder. Thanks.
All I wanted to say is, my name is spelled incorrectly. It's D-I-A-N-N-A. Last name is correct. My comments were not, I do not leave reflected accurately. If you would like a copy of what I said, I'm more than happy to give it to you, and you can summarize it, but it was not, that is not what I spoke about in the public comments, and I'd like you to correct it.
And what else do you want to talk about?
I'd rather wait till the end. They're not agenda items.
Okay, that's fine. All right, August 12, 2019, minutes. Motion to approve.
We're going to...
We may change the spelling, but I mean, I think...
Again, keep in mind, the minutes are the spirit of the meeting.
They are.
It's not going to be verbatim. It's not going to be word-for-word. It's the spirit of the meeting. Reading that should give you an idea of what was said. And I found no issue personally. You're not going to get every single detail. You're going to get the spirit of the meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say that as well, but I mean, yeah, you're never going to get them correct. But I know normally we put attachments on there, but I don't think we normally post the ordinance on the minutes. But they're available on the website, the ordinance.
Yeah.
So, you can go, just commenting on the ordinance. I know you can go and just go down through the codes, and the new ordinance would be posted there that you can look up right after seeing.
And they're all on the website.
And they're also advertised, you know, before they're adapted. So, they're available in the town building, they're available in the newspaper office, and the law library.
Redding Eagle Library, Mr. Howell. You could get them in numerous ways.
And there can be amendments or corrections at a later date as well. So, I don't know if it's a good policy, but maybe the public, if you see something drastically wrong that is not the spirit, that it could be submitted either by email or dropped off, and we can consider that for addition because, I mean, the overall spirit of the minutes was...
I'll make a motion to approve the August 12 minutes with the spelling Ms. Reeser's name correctly.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Big Jeffs. Any further discussion? House in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was opposed, ayes have it. Next to approve, August 26, 2019, minutes. I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? House in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was opposed, ayes have it. Dispersments.
Make a motion to approve the dispersments, subject to audit. Or not Treasury support, Jeff, just make a motion to approve them.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? House in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It was opposed, ayes have it.
All, what's next?
Old business, Michelle. Monthly golf report.
Okay, this has been submitted through to the board on the management.
A little louder, please.
Sure. These have been already submitted to the board for review during the review period starting over the weekend. These are the summary statements here. And these are also posted on to the website for people to review prior to the meeting.
These were posted Friday on the website, as I had said on some of the social media channels. So, this was already here for everybody to do, to talk about transparency, talk about, you know, having everything out there. So, again, this was something that the public could have digested throughout the weekend. Some good news on the golf, you know, 361 more rounds from last year, the month of August, and $43,589 less expense than last year. So, and then, I know you always ask the question, how many rounds are left with the package? $26,954 is left from the people that pre-purchased the packages. So, a great story. Again, it's the fact that we cut the maintenance and increased the rounds. The golf course is making money. It's a simple business. Just cut expense and drive the revenue up. And that's why I think this is, you know, one of the better years that we've had at the golf course because we're looking at it monthly, we're being proactive, and we are saying, you know, making adjustments as it happens. So, anybody else have any comments?
I have a question.
No.
We can't ask about the expenses? Give us a chance to look at them on the website?
Mr. Hughes, you talked with your agenda, and you should have brought it up. It's not a surface. This is our meeting to get things done. Sorry. Not a town hall. What I think?
No, I would just comment. I mean, it was a very solid month for revenue considering we had airification on the course. So, essentially, we had one week less of revenue, so $85,000 or so of revenue. Normally, you know, certainly, July, June, we were up around $100,000, but it was very solid on the revenue side. For people that, you know, dig through the numbers that have been posted out on the website, there were a couple anomalies, you know, that I need to correct it for myself too. There were actually three pay periods in the month, so it made the profit look lower. So, you basically had six weeks of pay instead of four in a normal month. But that adds, you know, $15,000 or so. So, there's a couple things on there, our annual software contract and everything we're on that month. Things come together like that. So, looking at it as a snapshot on the month, you know, it looks worse than it was. It was actually a very good month. And year-to-date, you know, we're on track doing very well.
Yeah, the other thing, folks, is the $16,000 was due to the tent, due to the mold issue. So, that's kind of like a call-out on the report that $16,000 was due to the mold. So, those tents that we had to get for the several outings that we had, that's that expense. So, we wanted the public to be aware of that. We actually put that in there. But that was not due to the golf course operation. That was due to the mold in the clubhouse.
And the other comment I would say, as we get into the budget cycle, you know, the monthly reporting has been quite good. You're tracking month to month, seeing where the issues are, seeing what you can do on the revenue side. So, I think it's going to help us a lot, you know, in transparency. Where year-to-year, you look at it once a year, and then no one's really up to speed on it. So, I think this will be a good baseline.
Derek Bryan's team and the entire township staff have done a really, really good job. So, kudos to them and all that.
I said that to you, Dave, about, you know, like it's...
Okay, next up, monthly write-to-know request report. This is a new thing we're doing, what we're doing, and again, this was on the website on Friday. If you were bored over the weekend, you could have looked at all these. July and August write-to-knows are posted. What we have is the person's name, what they requested, we took the address out to protect the innocent, and there are items there to show the public, hey, this is what, this is what people are...
Larry, can you bring that up, please?
Can you bring up write-to-knows later?
Do July.
So, that, um, my good friend, Glenn, look, there you go, Glenn. Take a picture. Give a smartphone. Um, there we go. That's what they're requesting, so now, this is July and August, as I said, now that, you know, the board can discuss this report. Is it valuable? Is it something we want to show? That's what we want to kind of talk about, to know July and August are posted. This is who requested them, what the request is, and another stat is, August, we had 11 write-to-knows, seven were answered within five days, two were denied for legal reasons. So, again, it's another story. I know there was commotion about, oh, wait 30, 35 days. Well, no, it actually got there suddenly in five days, so a pretty, you know, again, there's going to be times when you have to wait 30, 35 days, that's reality, and if there's something that's more pressing with the township, your write-to-know may wait, but we're going to get to them when we get to them based off current staff needs.
Question, I mean, I think most people have, a lot of people have computers and do look at them over the weekend.
Except for Glenn.
No, is there, is there a way? I don't think we have a public copier here in the office, but I mean, like you charge for copies, is there a way to just have a hard copy of these on Friday? Of course, they won't be available till Monday. If someone wanted to come in and get copies of them, they could...
We charge.
Yes, that's definitely something we can do.
Does it need to get copies of any of the things on the agenda?
We're charging it, Glenn. We're charging it. Mark the paper. We do accept regular dollar sheets.
Question was, though, I'm not overly excited about the having the description of their request on there, just because you could have a crazy neighbor that wants to know about, and then just keep filing on somebody, and I just think it just...
I'm in...
Like, I just, I'm fine to see the name and, you know, how many days it took and all that, I just don't think we need to have the description per se on it as a report, and if we're going to put this, we should put from the year-to-date, we should go with January.
That's all public opinion, so I'm okay with the description.
Okay, I mean, as long as it's, I'm just saying, you could just...
I guess we're that, if it's something that's controversial between two neighbors, we'll redact the names.
We did have it reviewed by a legal council to make sure that we were in good standing to have that posted.
Okay.
We did try to give vague overviews, we don't give complete detail of what's on the request form.
Yeah, the request forms themselves are public record. In the event that the request did identify anything that should be redacted, however, we would redact it before production, so.
And, so this is July and August.
Yes.
Can we get January to July then up? If we're going to do it, do it the whole year, do it all, if you're going to keep doing it, then just do it for the whole year.
So, that is a project that could be done, it would cost legal time, so we would have to have expense and time to be able to complete those requests.
What does the other board member say?
Well, January through June.
What was it, 400?
I would like to see it, but I'd like to know how much it costs, too, because you're factoring in what it costs to do a write-to-know, and now we're factoring in what it costs to summarize.
Well, why am I asking questions?
No, I know, but I mean, I think it's a factor, I mean, I think some seem to get excessive with how many they make.
That's, I think...
You know, so I think...
To me, the story is who's requesting them and what they're requesting, and a lot of it is frivolous, so that's what I think is more powerful item. To get costs is going to be another, a huge, louder place, huge endeavor.
So, if he wants in addition to this to figure out the cost calculation, we would have to figure out legal time as well as staff time, that would be a lot of accounting that has to be doing.
Aren't we already billed for the legal time?
Uh, it was not until the board requested that we have the invoices split out that we were giving that, so it didn't occur until July. Again, we can go back, but there'll be an expense to legal to...
Well, I'm not like that.
Or maybe for the rest of the year, have a simplified version without them.
Well, it would be a cost estimate.
Maybe look at whatever would be easiest, but...
Because sometimes it doesn't go to legal, sometimes Michelle's team can handle it. So, a lot of times you're looking at, hey, it took Tina a half hour, she's getting paid $200 an hour, so it's $5. You know, something I'd like to think she's been... I just threw it out there as an example.
But I also like, it's kind of like I asked Lori about, how many people watch the video?
Okay.
And we didn't average, and that's views, that's not people, that's the number of views, and we didn't even hit 100 views, and that's when, before we started a video, the guy just was asking, how much does it cost? And there was no real basis, but I mean, they just cashed through a number, like maybe $200, $30, you know, a month, so again, it's another cost, I just, you know, I mean, I just thought, I didn't know how hard it would be to post it up.
To what, to go back or put the cost?
To go back to what we had, and yet I'm not looking to waste a lot of money, though.
Why don't we just get an estimate, how long it might take, and then we could talk about the next meeting.
Yeah, because I don't want to waste a lot of money or time on it.
But to me, that's, to me, that's good, we could talk about adding cost and going retro until January, but let's, you know, let's keep it going every month. Good stuff. Next up, new business, adopt ordinance further establishing fireworks regulations. We beat this back to dead pulp over the year. Was there any board discussion about the fireworks regulations? We did that?
No, I mean, I think we did review it, and we tried to take everyone's concerns into it, I mean, nothing can happen more than an hour unless, you know, people jump through a lot of hoops and it comes to this board, it gets discussed at a public meeting. Probably not going to happen, it's a possibility, but...
Well, it's not even this board, it's, the board's continuing on.
Yes.
From here forward, at least, you know, before, what did we have by the state? There was nothing.
And for me, there's a chance that there's a site somewhere in the township where it would be, could be acceptable, but...
Yeah, I agree, if it's out far and, you know, but other than that, like Dave said, they would have to jump through hoops and get a vote from us, and I think our default option right now is good, and then anything more than that needs to be discussed at a public meeting and voted on.
I wouldn't have to call the cops, I like tagged off on Saturday, but I just went outside and just yelled at the top of my lungs to knock off the fireworks. Call the cops. So, I ring the doorbell, I got a video.
I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance further establishing fireworks regulations.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Next up, authorize administration to advertise for bids for the 2019-20 winter snowplow.
Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to review the possibility for the administration to go out to advertise for bids for the 2019-20-20 winter snowplowing season. I know it's nice and warm outside right now, but we are thinking about snow season, so we'd like to have the board authorize us to start to advertise for bids.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Next up, consider resolution approving stormwater management and operation and maintenance agreement for 341 Stonetown Road.
We received a application for a stormwater plan for the resident of 341 Stonetown Road. Their proposed improvements include the construction of a roof over an existing horse-riding trail or track. With the increase in the roof area, this, this stormwater, our stormwater ordinance, which is our Act 167 ordinance, must be in compliance. The advocate did prepare a stormwater plan, received the necessary approvals, our office did review, and the plan isn't compliant with our Act 167 stormwater ordinance. As part of that ordinance requirement, the advocate must enter into a, what we call operation and maintenance of the BFP's best management practice, the stormwater devices, which is between the township and the advocate, to ensure that these measures are maintained properly throughout their life expectancy, as well as perform the routine maintenance. This is a standard form that we do have in our ordinance, and we are recommending to the board, to make an agreement for, for the operation and maintenance of a 341 Stonetown Road.
Questions?
If the board wants to move forward with this, we need a resolution approving stormwater management and operation and maintenance agreement for 341 Stonetown Road.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Next up, a second favorite topic, establish date for trick-or-treat, and recommend the board establishes October 31st, from 5:00 to 8:00. Last year, we got a lot of good feedback from the residents saying Halloween should be one night. I know many, many years, it's always been two nights, but many, many residents, when I doorknob during the campaign, said Halloween should be one night, one night, one night. So, to me, Halloween is Halloween, so it should be one night. I'm very passionate about this issue. Halloween should be one night, October 31st.
Should we go to 9:00 PM, maybe?
Yeah.
Just eight, yeah. He was like eight early.
Well, I think so.
My wife loves him in our cottage.
It's a school night. So, for clarification, yes, the board does need to approve the timeframe.
We talked about this last year.
Last year's timeframe was from 5:00 until 9:00 PM. You do that as well this year. Again, for those not wishing to participate, you can certainly turn your lights off and not participate. This is to allow people the opportunity who want to to be out and trick-or-treating during that time, so you can just let us know if you'd like to have your time.
If it's just going to be at Halloween?
It's just one night.
Oh, I know that. But we do have to, why do we have to?
I think...
It is a township requirement.
It's an ordinance, we have to approve it.
Because it's like, if you wanted to have kids go trick-or-treat, go trick-or-treat, and it's like, I just feel stupid that we even have to...
That's government, that's government. Chief, are you okay with 9:00 PM?
Yes, sir.
And if you want it sooner, just turn your lights out.
So, we'll go 5:00 to 9:00? I'm okay with that. Is the residents okay with 9:00 PM?
Yes.
No one's going to complain.
Someone's...
5:00 to 9:00 PM.
5:00 to 6:00.
5:00 to 5:30.
They were meeting Thursday.
11:00.
They get back tonight.
Okay, so ordinance to establish trick-or-treat night for this year, October 31st, 5:00 to 9:00 PM.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Next up, approve amendment to Pioneer Crossing landfill host agreement. I think there's corrections to this.
There's an addition, and we should get that sure. So, the Pioneer Crossing, there's actually, there's two separate agreements that are involved, and just to kind of give some overview, there was an existing agreement that's already in place with township, and it is to extend, you know, significantly further into the future, and the township felt that there was a better deal that could be struck financially as well as additional controls in place. So, there's, there's going to be two different documents that are involved here, agreements. The one is an amendment to the original landfill host agreement, very favorable terms financially for the township. There's a 10% per ton increase, which is expected to increase revenue in the vicinity of about $40,000 a year. There's going to be a $500,000 payment that is made as well as marketing and campaign contribution, capital campaign efforts for a new firehouse, and there's also a requirement for a $60,000 annual minimum contribution to a township or local organization. So, that's the first agreement. The second agreement is a joint cooperation agreement. That's an additional $500,000 contribution that's going to be made towards the new firehouse, and it's also, once there is, if the DEP approves dumping on the western borough area, the annual donation is going to increase from a minimum of $60,000 to $100,000 per year to township or local organization. Okay, I'm sorry, if I said 10%, I meant 10 cents per ton.
Yes.
Increase.
Everything looked good, I just had a question about the two $500,000, how are those payments going to be broken up? I know we had said we're going to do $200,000 over five years, if I remember correctly.
The amendment provides for $100,000 annually for five years. The joint cooperation agreement, I don't have the details of that in front of me right now to speak to.
Same thing.
Same thing. Okay, $100,000 for five years.
Okay, so 100 from each, so 200 total for five years.
Exactly.
Awesome.
A million total.
About posted to on our share point. Comments?
I think it's great, and I think it's wonderful, and also Pat's going to help lead the campaign to give other businesses, to help fund for the fire department, anything we can help take off of what's taxpayers or whatever we might be spending up at the prime, it's just phenomenal, and to give our fire department what they, what they need, for one thing, and deserve, like, more so what they really need and to help them grow, I mean, I can't think of a better, a better thing to be happening.
I agree. It's great. It was a very good negotiation, and very much appreciated.
Yep, I think it shows that this board is business savvy, and we got a great deal done, and more important thing is that the fire department, most of you guys are here tonight, you know, you guys, I know we've been talking about this for many, many years, even before I was the supervisor, so we're excited that you guys get, we, you guys, you know, are going to, something that we've talked about for many, many years is finally coming to a reality, so I want to thank Pat and his team and our team, I think it's a really great deal, and I think it's something that, again, it's, you know, I always talk about the sins of the past, but, you know, this is a great field going forward, so I just want to thank everybody for their work and their, I think this is a win-win for everybody, and it gets us closer to the station and less tax dollars involved to build the central
You know, you guys, I know we've been talking about this for many, many years, even before I was the supervisor, so we're excited that you guys get what you guys, you know, are gonna, something that we've talked about for many, many years is finally coming to a reality. So I wanna thank Pat and his team and our team. I think it's a really great deal, and I think it's something that, again, it's, you know, I always talk about the sins of the past, but you know, this is a great field going forward. So I just wanna thank everybody for their work and their, I think this is a win-win for everybody, and it gets us closer to the station and less tax dollars involved to build the central station, so.
I'd like to thank Vinnie too, because he took time off for work, once or twice, to work on this, so thanks for that.
Good job.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to Pioneer Crossing landfill host agreement and.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At the end, guys.
You're allowed to ask one before you vote or something. Read this one, try and walk.
Carl, please. Your comments are coming at the end. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Next up, discuss application for zoning hearing board, 191 Doctor Room.
Yeah, so the question here is whether we want to send anyone to the zoning hearing board as a representative for the township in this matter.
And I don't think the resident is here tonight, so.
That's correct.
We usually stay neutral on this, so I would say my thought is no, as long as there's consensus from the other board members.
I don't think we have to send anyone. There's a protocol for us.
Stay neutral. Next up, approve extension of mowing contracts. So start assigning lawn care for 2020. This is the last extension cost remaining is 58, 185.
So we are looking to extend the visiting contract.
Yeah, this is our regular mowing contract for all the sports fields, half the detention areas, around the township building, library, and stuff like that. It's looking to extend it for one more year.
Is that anything that are just the same? Same price? They've done a pretty good job.
Yes.
About two years.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Next up, authorize that, I think you guys, for the fire department, there's two pieces of equipment that you guys wanna sell.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We have two fire trucks that are actually titled to the township that the fire department would like to sell. We have no longer use for them, and they're ready to go up. So we would like to get requests to go ahead and have them posted for sale.
Do you have to do them individually, or?
Little louder, please.
Do we have to do these individually, or can we just vote them together?
Why don't you do them individually, please? The first one is 2,000 Freightliner fire truck.
And then these get recorded on later, what they actually sell for, or is there any approval of that? It's just an approval to sell at best price?
It's actually a disposal approval.
I'll make the motion for the 2,000 Freightliner fire truck.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
And the second one is a 1997 Spartan fire truck.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Would you want to say anything, Chief?
Yes, this is, we have a vehicle being specked out. Please speak louder.
We go to the podium, Chiefs, their microphone. Mr. Howell, no more interruptions, please.
No, it's under the law.
I can't hear.
That's right.
Can't hear it.
Excuse me, Mr. Jordan.
I have a right under the law. Okay, Mr. Howell.
No, it's under the law.
Mr. Chief.
These listeners not gonna go by the law? You're not gonna go by the law?
What am I talking about, Mr. Howell?
No, you're in violation of the law.
Okay, we'll talk about it after.
No, section, section 7101.
Mr. Howell.
I'm afraid. Okay, you're breaking the law.
I get escorted again?
Everybody wanna see who's in charge here? Read the law. Those people who got the, write the note, read it.
That's enough. Thank you. First of all, thank you for approving the sale.
You speak louder, Mr. Howell. Last one.
Thank you.
As you know, we're trying to reduce the number of frontline apparatus in our fleet. We have one apparatus being specked out currently being delivered in approximately six to eight weeks. Once we take delivery on that, we're hoping to sell two apparatus so that the frontline apparatus will be depleted by one. And hopefully in the future that will save more fuel, less maintenance, wear and tear, etc.
Thank you.
Part of our overall strategic apparatus plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you have mapped out, so like 15, 20-year plan, or is it even longer than that, right? I mean, it's.
Yeah, right now it's out to 2035. And if we execute the plan, which we have in the last 15 years, there's no additional expense to the township on an apparatus replacement plan. We're one of the only municipalities in Berks County that has that plan. I recently attended a few workshops, and there are at least four departments that are gonna model that plan in the future. So it's kind of the gold standard for Berks County, and it's working quite well.
Very nice. Appreciate it, Chief. Next up, approve contract for Wolf Roofing in the amount of 120,400 for replacing the roof at the Four Seasons Room at the Rent Country Court.
This is to provide first of the material to remove and install a new roof, well, remove the ceramic one, and install a, it's called an old castle plazza type paper, 24 by 24 inch. This will be by Wolf Roofing at a cost of $120,000. 120,400, I'm sorry. Also, this is under the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, which we are a member of, solves a problem that we did. We use this for the farming ridge part also.
Have a good reputation.
Very good, yeah. Very well in the commercial side. It sounds like a lot. I mean, it's a very complicated, it's a large room, very complicated. The structure was built incorrectly. It's gotta be torn down, jackhammered off, concrete, that's what we do, has to be rebuilt basically from scratch.
Yeah, it's a 60 by 32. Two inches of concrete that has to come on. And you know, I, well, this was not the township.
It didn't have to be.
And it was not the township's property fault, and it's not built properly.
And this roof will, they'll be able, people can stand on it, like not maybe right now, but then, okay?
These will be regular 24 by 24 papers that will sit on a 90 gauge rubber knee and premium roof. We'll have discs on all four corners allowing the water to run. It gets a proper drip edge, which was a problem with the last roof, didn't have any drip edge on it. Gets new gutters.
Sprout staircases?
Yes, spiral staircases.
Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No, I think it's great there.
Same here.
It's just, it's getting one step closer.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Front porch. I'll pass. We had brush collection last week. We had eight locations where we picked up. There were also three that were on, three more addresses, but when we got there, it wasn't there in here, so I'm assuming it probably was, took that. Right now, we're working on highway mowing. Started that on, I guess it was Friday. And tomorrow, we're getting 400 tons of salt, so everybody's looking forward to winter. Happy to hear that. That's fine. Oh, one more thing. We are going to pave the trail, the last edition of the trail on Lorraine Park, so that will be completed probably later tomorrow, as long as everything goes right, we'll put about 300 tons of blacktop.
Lorraine Hollow?
Lorraine Hollow.
Yeah, I was over there this weekend, and there was five different sets of people on the trail, so it was definitely being used.
Just allowed quite a bit more too.
A lot of people use it.
Yeah, it was, it was nice.
Happy with that progress on the Lorraine Hollow.
That's it.
Thank you. Chiefs?
Just a few things. I'd like for the township residents to be mindful of the new scam that's been targeting the residents here in township. Recently, we've taken some reports of residents receiving checks in the mail with an official looking letter indicating that they won the publisher's clearinghouse. I hate to say it, but in the letter is a check that the, that the clearinghouse is asking that the residents cash and forward money to a location here in the United States. Unfortunately, we got a resident that was victim of the scam for thousands of dollars. So if you see something like that in the mail, please contact the police department. Do not cash that check, and please do not send any money. If you have any question about it, call us. Our officers will gladly come out to the house and take a look at the correspondence for you. Just make sure you give us a call. In addition, I'm happy to announce that we finished our oral exam portion for our police applicants. We had interviewed over 40 applicants over six days. So we had a lot of interest in the position, and that will be moving forward, but we have some really good applicants that will serve the township well in the future.
Questions for Chief? Thank you, sir. Joe, any other report?
Just one, just one quick item. Norfolk Southern, the update on the bridge, the emergency permit has been signed and executed by both parties and issued. We are waiting for confirmation when Norfolk Southern will start construction. They're estimating two months only because of the manufacturing of the storm sewer structures themselves. The box culvert has about an eight to 10 weekly time. So they're waiting for production to be complete before they mobilize and begin construction. We hope it's sooner, however, that's their estimate at this time. I will keep the staff posted if that construction schedule does change or gets modified, hopefully for the better, closer. But things are progressing, unfortunately. I know for a fact that a lot of the foundries, it is, there is a lag time for storm sewer inlets, and especially the box culvert. The box culvert is probably the most time consuming because of the construction schedules and this time of year, production has been taking a long time.
So you're saying they're gonna basically start in November? That's the estimate?
Most likely. If that two-month timeframe pans out, yes. Hopefully it'll be before that and get the material in quicker. However, that's what their estimate time of construction.
And then what was the estimate, given the winter months involved now of completion? Was it a six month?
I think it'll be less than six months. I think if weather conditions are favorable, they'll be able to do the grading, and hopefully it'll be at least a base course down on the road. The temperature criteria for base course is 35 and rising, so we're hoping that if the weather, we have a decent December, hopefully we'll get the base down, and then any final restoration such as topsoil seeding and the final wearing course can be done in the spring. So we're staying optimistic that hopefully the majority of the work can get done in the fall time season, provided we don't have a harsh winter, and that starts early. They didn't give us any indication how long it would take, but we don't think it'll take too, too long, maybe several months.
Not a real good job, no.
I think once the equipment and once the materials are on site, we don't anticipate it taking too long.
So odds that next football season that'll be open are very high?
I would say yes.
Okay.
When do they usually close down for like the McCaddo? I know like sometimes the plant they'll shut it down.
Sometimes they don't, but you're.
Correct.
Some of them.
If the demand's there and the temperature's there, those plants will stay open. If it's not, there is a lot of projects, there's a lot of turnpike projects, and also a lot of pen dot projects that haven't even begun yet. Some of them have. So if we do have a mild winter or a mild fall, yes, Clarence is right, some of those plants may stay open all year long.
Yeah, I remember one time we were at a bank, and they closed it down in November, so we had to wait till like spring.
I've seen, I mean, I would say historically, maybe in the last few years, usually in December, January, but I would say in the last two or three years, they've been staying open as long as they can. There's such a great demand of construction work right now that a lot of these plants are staying open as long as they can, and actually, they're staying open at night at times because of the nighttime work that's being performed. I'm sure when Park Yoman Avenue, the overlay, they're gonna be doing that at nighttime, so those plants will be operating during the night as well. But I don't have my disruptions. So that's all I have. I will keep everyone posted. Park Yoman Avenue? The only thing I can say, Park Yoman Avenue is unfortunately our progress meeting has been canceled for tomorrow. Tentatively, right now, the overlay's not supposed to start within the next two weeks. However, I will try to confirm that schedule and get a more definitive timeframe. The meeting is to be rescheduled. Hopefully it'll be this week, if not sooner. This will probably be, I think, our last meeting that we'll have. However, I know they're doing the final restoration and getting a lot of trench work done and curving. We have, I know we had some issues, and we still do have some issues, which I will pass on to proper pen dot officials to hopefully have some meetings out in the field so some of those issues can be resolved prior to the final wearing course. However, I will warn everyone that it will be at nighttime operations, so expect a lot of delays. Avoid that area during night. The good news is, it's not gonna, it's not gonna disrupt the daytime traffic flow, so the nighttime will work much better.
Just so the whole board knows, I asked, there was an Allabilities Fitness Center having an issue with the cars backing out the way the curb was, so I let him know to look into that, which is, Dirty Diesel's, it is the owner and Allabilities Fitness is, there's trouble. But it's, I actually went there, the curb is a little high for cars to back out, so.
I'll forward that, I'll forward that concern on.
I think a lot of that though was because of the blacktop.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once that road comes out, you're not gonna be doing that.
Well, yeah, because I had some concerns with issues too as well, and I named my neighbor, and then the guy came, the guys came out and we were talking about it, and I was understanding more so what they were saying. I was, my concern, I was asking, was why was the curb pushed out two feet from where it originally was? But it was stating that there, you know, before, if you were going straight up your manner, you would've ran into the old existing, like now it's more of a straight line, it's, so it's just one of those, you just gotta see it.
But the assumption I had is they probably took some of that discontinuity that was there in the alignment. I know when Clarence and I were at the last progress meeting, we did pose that question, and they mentioned that it was per the plan, so I was assuming they tried to tweak that alignment to make it a little bit better than what it was before.
Right, that's what they were saying, so.
That's all, thank you.
Next up, list of reports.
Two items. The first is the writ of summons that was authorized at the last public meeting has been filed. And the second item is, there has been a step two grievance that has been filed. I would ask the board to consider approving and designating John Granger as the appeal. Designate to hear that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Just the one that we reviewed.
Okay. The only thing I wanna add is that, you know, when we designate John, it's still a board.
It's board.
It's a board, you know, there's some confusion out there.
It's not him acting.
It's not him doing it, he comes to the board, so I just wanna let people know that he's consulting us, he's not making decisions on his own, so I want the public to be aware of that, so that's ethnic, so that's what I wanted to add. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Michelle, manager's report.
Okay, sir.
Last few public comments. David Hughes. Caroline.
I have a timer on my watch, so you want to tell me? So do I.
Oh, Jesus.
Address, name and address. Name and address.
47th Street.
I didn't hear that. Name and address, please.
47th Street.
No, your name.
David Hughes.
Address. I didn't hear it.
I'd like to talk about.
I need your address, sir.
I actually need your full address.
You have to say your house number. Did you say 47th Street? You did not give your full address. Name and full address. Just say it, Dave.
David Hughes, 255 West 47th.
Thank you. Very good.
I want you to know you're violating privacy rights. Okay, so you're cutting in on my time. I expect to get more time because of that. I noted on the, going through the minutes and the meetings, that 7:24, meeting 7:24 to 8:12, 8:26, and tonight, we have never have a manager's report, and the manager wears many hats, and yet we have nothing from him. We would think that there should be a plethora of issues that he would report to the public, but never is there a manager's report. I find that suspicious. For example, on 8:26, you motioned to dispossess equipment, some by scrap, some by, I think, bid. So this would be an item that you should come back and report to us if we received any monies from the scrap, or any monies from the bids, and also advertise when that bid is going to occur, so maybe someone here would like to attend and they can offer. Also, the transfer policy. I hope that, I mentioned it before, and I'm hoping that you're working with that to identify a transfer policy from one fund to another fund. And I think that the 7 million that's sitting in the general fund should be moved back to the sewer fund until the sewer fund, until the sewer's sold, and then the sewer fund can be closed. Finally, I wanna talk about the per capita tax. Everybody here, some extra resident, they paid per capita tax, or is going to. And we have a former supervisor who hasn't paid along with a significant other for about 10 years. And we can only go back and get this year's and five years prior, but the board, some of the board or all the board knows that she hasn't paid it, and you're not doing anything to attempt to collect it. These monies are owned to the township residents. We pay the tax. As a supervisor, she shouldn't have paid the tax, and if you don't follow up on this and collect the tax, you send a message to every one of us here, asking the question, why should we pay it? Okay? So I hope you'll follow up on this one, direct the tax collector to go after this.
Can I ask you a question now, real quick? So, I know, so, okay, how much is per capita, per capita tax? It's $15, right?
10 to the school, 5 to the tax.
As far as I know.
It's not the point.
As far as I know, she never took a paycheck as a supervisor, which is like $2,000 a year? So the whole time she was on the board, she did not take a paycheck? I get 8250 at a meeting, she did not take a paycheck. I'm just saying, I'm not saying. And again, if she did anything wrong, wouldn't you think the tax collector would go after it or whatever? If there's any issues with it, then it would've been handled.
I don't think, I don't think you comprehend the problem.
I comprehend a lot more than you think.
Alicia, maybe I can ask a different question, but this is just general about tax. We've talked about sewer before, and we have ways of going after sewer bills, but I think tax, not only because we outsource it, there's some legal protection, things[1740.98] tax, not only because we outsource, is there some legal protection, things that we cannot do on tax collection in general?
Yeah, obviously there are certain confidential things that can't be addressed, absolutely, with regard to taxpayers' bill of rights, but you are correct, I was going to say that the township does outsource its tax collection efforts. It's not the board that goes after any particular individual or any town.
Yeah, you can submit information to them, but we don't hear back what happened.
That's correct.
And the $7 million that we keep talking about, that was an internal transfer, so that is, that does not need board approval, so that's going to address it as well.
Next up, Carl Schenberg. Respectful Carl.
Thank you. Name and address. Come here up there. So everybody can hear you. Mr. Howell, name and address.
Carl Schenberg, 207 Lee Somney.
Thank you.
I asked you to read something before the meeting started and you said you already do this, so I said I would read it when it was my time. Specific reasons for executive sessions must be announced in the public meeting either before or directly after the executive session. You said you've done that, can you explain when you've done that?
When the solicitor gives their report out, we say we had an executive session.
That's not at the beginning of the meeting. As soon as you come back from the executive session, you're supposed to say what it is.
Okay.
And that's the sunshine. And it's written, it's in part of Fox Cost Trial, it's sunshine.
Looking to it, sir.
And the other part, when it's getting quiet back there, when you were voting on the host agreements. Before you vote for anything, the public has a right to speak. They don't have to be signed in, they have a right to speak. How long is the host agreement?
What's that?
How long is the host agreement?
The amendment or the original? I have the amendment, it's about five pages.
But how long is it? Is it one year, two years, 10 years?
It's, my understanding is it's as long as the landfill's going to be in operation.
A useful length of landfill.
So I think that's the document, when you said how long.
Yeah, I thought you said how long the document is.
No, 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 not the length, I would put the length of time that the host agreement is good for.
As long as the landfill's, yeah.
So as long as that's open, you can renegotiate another landfill?
That's actually not true. This original host agreement, which was in effect since 2000, was something that we renegotiated by way of this amendment.
Okay. The roof that was put on the, or it's going to be put on the country club, that didn't have to be put out for bids? I couldn't hear him, you can't hear back here? You can't hear him? Huh?
It's not in the law.
So it doesn't have to be put out for bids, is that right? Okay.
It's a cooperative purchase.
I'll look into the executive session for you, sir.
You want to help?
I have an answer for you now. I have an answer for you next.
Okay. Again, with the sewer plant, the $7 million, you can take the $7 million out and just put it in the general fund? Where'd the $7 million come from?
Don't know.
You don't know? But $7 million, you don't have any idea where it went? You're taking it out and putting it in a general fund to pay Fox Cost Trial?
It was the auditor, it actually did explain that at the meeting. The audit that we had a couple of weeks ago. Okay. You might have been late.
Is that it, sir?
Well, yeah, I have a question for you, but I'll, you can tell it. I'll see you in two weeks.
See you. Diana, do you want to have a general comment?
Diana Reeser, 4134 Lanale Avenue. I just have a couple of questions, suggestions, whatever, however they come across. In looking at the website, I notice sometimes when I click on links, it goes to Facebook and I was wanting to know if there could be an alternate, because I'm not on Facebook, so I can't see what is being referenced.
Okay.
So I would greatly appreciate that. And then with the website, I'm just wondering, do we have an estimated time when it'll be completed? Because a lot of times when you click on things, you get URL.
Yeah, there's a couple of links that are still being worked on. Or you have an estimate?
No, as well, this will be an ongoing matter because of the fact that we're populating pages, we're currently working on the police department webpage. We have one person dedicated to this project.
Okay.
It'll be several months.
Okay. And last, I just wanted to ask, are swales not getting mowed anymore? Because it seems like they used to be done like twice a year and I don't think ours have been done in quite a while.
Which area?
We're in Hunter's Row.
The one on the right, when you come in off Shelbourne, like after.
The one on?
She's on Lynn.
I'm on Lynn, so it's that big swale that goes down to Lynn and comes up on gunpowder.
I know Sodasani did the one right after Whitetail, Caribou Elk, and then it's right there on the right. They just did that one over the weekend.
Yeah, they just took pictures. I mean, we walk our dogs all the time. It's pretty long.
I know they were in.
So I just was curious to know, I think it used to be done twice a year and it doesn't seem, or okay, three times is even better, but it doesn't seem like it's been done, so I didn't know if something had changed and that's what I was asking. Or did it just get missed? Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Reeser. At that point, just always feel free to call the township.
There's a long area in the bottom of that that they're letting grow, because that's what's.
Yeah, and that's not exactly, I mean, you can really, it's really coming up on the side, so, thanks.
Michelle, do you have a general comment?
Oh, yeah.
Three minutes.
Michelle Kircher, 11017 Drive. I asked you when you brought up about the host agreement and about that you were doing something with the zoning, if we could be made aware of it and also if there could be a public meeting so the residents had a right. Then you said yes, and you totally ignored what we requested as residents. And I agree that we had a right to put in our 2 cents because it's the township's property and you didn't do that. You took an illegal vote tonight. And then we find out, was Mr. Viacone the only one who was standing there negotiating? You don't know and you voted on something you don't know about. Well, first of all, he's not qualified to do so. Does anyone know what the other landfills are getting as host fees in this county? What are they getting, John?
Public comment.
You don't want a comment? Okay, well, there's one landfill that a municipality has over $60 million in the bank. Even from the sale of our sewer plant would have been enough to build the firemen their house right away, as soon as their new firehouse. 10 cents a ton more is an insult to our municipality. And it is not right to not let the residents vote and to push us through, and it's no offense to you, Mr. Mascara.
It is.
No, it isn't. It's to any landfill, any landfill, and I'm entitled to my opinion.
All right, that's why we're letting you talk.
And that land, we wanted to have some kind of businesses down there. And Mr. Mascara.
Who's we?
The township wanted to, well, that's why you zoned it differently before. And Mr. Mascara had promised different business parks down there and it never came to be. But I'm concerned about the welfare of our residents and what's best for our residents, not what's best for anyone else. And I just want to make sure that our firemen are taken care of for sure right away in the future, they don't have to wait any longer for a firehouse, which we could do anyway with the monies from the firehouse. And we have people that really need to know what they're negotiating about and to look into what other agreements that they have.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, Ms. Kircher. Next up.
Good evening, Bill Fox, Pioneer Crossing Landfill, JP Mascaro and Sons, 727 Red Lane Road. First, I'd like to thank the township for its consideration of the two proposed agreements, which the solicitor Sam Cortez at the August 26 meeting indicated would be considered by the board tonight, and they were considered and adopted. Mr. Cortez, Mr. Supervisor Bean Coney, Mr. Granger, in a process that started approximately two months ago, when we were approached by the township to increase the benefits under our host community agreement and to give the township additional controls, which they would otherwise not get under the original host agreement. We agreed and we were favorably inclined to assist the township as we have done financially, environmentally, in many numerous ways for the last 20 years. And the amendments to these agreements were broken out into two agreements, which the board considered tonight. As it relates to some of Ms. Kirchner's remarks about the landfill, it's important to know that this woman has been staunch opponent of the Mascaro family and Pioneer Crossing Landfill.
She's also, she's also one of our supervisors, so she has a show off, but.
And she made a comment about, she made a comment about what other landfills are paying. Well, they're, in Berks County, the money Pioneer Crossing pays to host, to municipalities is $3.55 per ton. $2.25 to Exeter Township, $1.30 to Burnsboro. Without the $1.30 to Burnsboro, the landfill would never have gotten approved, the last expansion. Other landfills, Western Berks landfill, currently $2 per ton. Rolling Hills landfill, currently $3 per ton. Conestoga landfill, currently $1.55, $1.50 per ton. The mega landfill that she didn't name, but she was talking about, was the Groves landfill down in Bucks County, which takes five voluminous volumes of waste and I think it's like 20,000 tons a day or something like that. So to compare, trying to compare our landfill, which is very small, very local, for handle area and regional customers or something like that, it's just not fair and it's not reasonable. We have been benefiting this township economically, socially and environmentally for 20 years. We've been a good corporate citizen and these agreements that you voted on tonight are good for both the Pioneer Crossing landfill and Exeter Township. And you should be congratulated for stepping forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mascaro, would you like to speak? Thank you, Mr. Fox.
My name is Pat Mascaro, 640 Ollie Line Road and Pioneer Crossing Landfill. I want to first thank the board for being very straightforward. I failed in negotiations and no nonsense and quite frankly, I was impressed with the business approach of the board. I want the public to know, it is a fact, that the township came to me trying to seek greater controls and more money from my operation. I would have needed nothing from Exeter Township for up to 25 years. I could have continued under the same economic arrangement for up to 25 years, but instead I thought about my children and I thought about my grandchildren. And I wanted to make sure that they did not have to come to these type of meetings that I've had to come to in the past and listen to the type of conduct that we just heard from the former supervisor. This is a progressive township, this is a great township, it's why I have so much money invested here outside of the landfill. This is a forward thinking, progressive board. The meetings, I've been impressed, they've been business oriented. That's a good sign for people like me, the taxpayer. That's a good sign like you. The days of personal preference and political expediency, and that's a way of the young lady that came up here and tried to say, take no offense, Mr. Mascara, this is how I feed my five children, my grandchildren.
Those things are over. That's me as chairman, those days are over.
And I'm responsible for 908 employees and I intend to be a friend to Exeter Township and I'm going to work for fire duty as if I'm working for myself, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mascara. Supervisor reports.
Nothing this week. Dave? Nothing.
Well, you know, I got something. So I just wanted, again, thank, congratulations to Darren on her baby. Also, thank you again to Mr. Mascaro and also, like I said, to the fire department that are here. I can't say enough for you guys and we did get a great letter about you guys from a fire that you were just recently at and like I said, again, he's just above, above the call of duty and exemplary, so. Again, the host agreement that we have, Mr. Mascara didn't have to actually dump any. He could have dumped $20,000, $20,000 tons a year, which would have, at 230, 225, would have not been any. Under this new agreement, I believe he has to do at least 360 to 400,000 tons and that difference right there, that 40,000 tons at 235 a ton is $94,000. So that's huge for the township. Plus, he's also going to donate 60 grand a year, at least, minimum, to minimum, to 60 grand towards other things for the township. It could be the library, they need a carpet, whatever. I mean, and again, he's above and beyond, so again, thank you again.
I just had two things. October 2nd is going to be the sunshine training for the supervisors and we did get a great letter from Schwartzwell Church with the job that Chris and your team did, so just want to, you guys are a lot in here, so I would like to congratulate you guys. About that fire, before we adjourn, about the Schwartzwell fire, just want to tell the public what happened there, if you can. Not to put you on the spot. You went on a happy note, you won't get attacked. Throw the gavel at them if they come at you.
Yes, I'd like to echo that comment. Deputy Chief Jordan, incident commander, I was there to help, but anyway, we felt that it was a lightning strike energized their conduit, their electrical conduit. The fire went underground and into their service box, so it was a kind of a difficult fire to trace. We were worried about there was extension into the church and other parts of the facility, but we did our due diligence. We stayed for a number of hours just to make sure the fire was out and contained and luckily it was. We even followed up the next day, visited the church and made sure everything was okay, so I'll echo those comments to the crew, they did a fine job as always and very proud of their efforts, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
Lightning strike up on Hillside, up on 47th Street, like three houses were hit, you guys were there for that one. Actually, I helped the, the one lady, her grandson, who used to teach my daughter violin, so I helped around and that lightning hit it, it blew out, melted like, I don't know, six or seven lines that went to like a dryer and other things and then there was like three other people that had issues, I mean, it could be pretty dangerous, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Not second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.